This is a special meeting of the City of Morro Bay City Council. It is Tuesday, March 9th, 2021. It is 3:30 PM. This meeting is being held via teleconference. And I'll ask the clerk if she would establish a quorum, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Barton? Has not joined us yet. Councilmember Davis?
I am present.
Councilmember Heller?
I'm here, thank you.
And Mayor Heding?
I'm present, thank you. Pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N 2920 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020, almost one year ago, this meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on cable channel 20 and streamed to the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure that the health and safety of the public, by limiting human contact that could spread COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for the meeting. Good afternoon. This again is a special study session meeting. This is an update on the status of the General Plan Local Coastal Plan. It's exciting to have it formally soon come to the City Council, but this special meeting is simply the equivalent of a workshop. And again, Council, no action will be taken this evening. Both the Planning Commission and the City Council will hold public hearings as required by law concerning sequel requirements. And the City Council will prospectively hold public hearings as required by law for subsequent review and possible approval of pending update to the General Plan Local Coastal Plan. We're scheduled to take the General Plan Local Coastal Plan and the EIR to the Planning Commission on March 16th for a public hearing. That's an announcement for public and council as well. And then a recommendation will come back to the City Council regarding both documents. The Planning Commission review will be focused on the EIR as they have basically completed their review of the General Plan Local Coastal Plan. Then in April, these documents will be coming to council for public hearings and the consideration of either passing, amending, or moving the plan forward. And that will be at a regular council meeting during the regular council time. So that's just an FYI, folks, as to what will be coming. Again, this is a study session. I would like to turn it over to Mr. Graham, I think, for announcement of the presentation. And welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Heding and members of council. I too am excited about getting to this point in the process. As was stated by the mayor, we are closing in on review of the adoption drafts and recommendation to City Council with the Planning Commission at their next meeting on the 16th. And since we were getting to that point and we hadn't touched base with the council in quite some time on the document, we thought it appropriate to bring it forward and to give you kind of an overview of what it is and reminder of what's in it and why we're updating it and those types of things. And so that's what we're going to be doing here this evening. We have Amy Sinsheimer. She's going to provide the presentation. And given that we have a limited amount of time, I think I'm going to turn it right over to Amy so we can hop right into that. Amy?
Welcome, Amy. And I just wanted, Amy, just, I wanted to announce that we will be taking public comment after the presentation. I wanted the community to have the advantage of having the presentation, so I'll take public comment after the presentation. So welcome, Amy.
Great. Thank you. Good to be here. Let me get my PowerPoint loaded up here. Okay. Yeah, as Scott and Mayor both said, it's a milestone to get here to this point tonight. So we did want to look back a little bit at the process as it has unfolded over the course of the update of Plan Morro Bay and then also talk about what has happened since the hearing draft was released last fall. So this is just our update on where we're at with things. I think the mayor already covered this. And then the zoning code work that is also a part of, overall part of this effort is still being worked on as well. So this is an integrated document, meaning that the local coastal program and the general plan are together in one document. As most of you already know, there are, there is a lot of information in the plan that explains where the local coastal program portion is and then where there are pieces that are part of the general plan but not part of your coastal documents. We also organized this into elements, into what we call the blueprint and the green print. So the chapter three or section three of the plan is what's called the blueprint. This focuses more on the physical development of the city and economic development, community design, those types of things. The green print focuses more on the natural resources pieces of your plan. So things like conservation, open space, and public safety. All of these things do interact and you'll see there's a section in each element about how each element relates to others, but that is the overall framework. You'll also recall that there is a section in each element talking about how resiliency is addressed in that element. That was a key focus of this plan from the beginning and there has been some grant funding that's gone into this process to make sure that resiliency is a key part of the approach to Plan Morro Bay. So looking back, you know, we started in late 2015, early 2016, gathering baseline data. And that ended up being part of a very large piece of the appendices to the document, which is the community baseline assessment. So that underpins the policies and implementation work that you see in the final draft plan before you today. Public outreach also started very early in the process and continued quite heavily for a couple of years. And then now we've been in the phase where we have public hearings and then we go back and work on the plan and then come back to you. But we had many workshops and did some survey and other outreach, particularly in those first couple of years. I will also note, because I don't know if it's called out otherwise in here, that we convened the General Plan Advisory Committee also very early in the process, so the GPAC for short, worked closely with the city staff and the community and the other decision makers to advise and provide really great expertise in different areas as we worked through, all the way up through the public draft of the plan. We came up with what we called the key issues and policies. There was a memo or a report associated with this and that was presented to the community and the decision makers, which was basically, you know, what we took away from that outreach and baseline data gathering. This is what we're hearing are the, you know, these are the key issues, both in terms of what the law requires the city to look at, but also what the community is looking for. Also in there was formulation of a vision and value statement, and that has guided the process as well. And that you will see in section two of the plan before you tonight. We also, through that outreach and analysis, landed on some land use alternatives. We looked at certain sites and areas in the city where change might occur during the timeframe of this plan and gathered a lot of input on that. We also looked at areas outside the city and whether or not those should be considered for various things, including future growth or any other interest of the city. And that is what has ended up in the, in the plan, being part of the planning area and the sphere of influence or future sphere of influence is also in there. So those are all pieces that we looked at as part of the land use alternatives. The round three grant tasks refers to various analyses and reports that were done using some grant funding to focus more on certain topic areas, for example, lateral access and sea level rise. So those are all part of the appendices as well. In spring of 2018, the public draft of Plan Morro Bay was released and that was the, you know, first full public version of everything that built on what we talked about in the last slides. And we did quite a bit of outreach with the public and decision makers. We worked with the Coastal Commission staff as they had comments on that draft. And that took quite a while to work through all of that input and address all of those comments. And then we came back with a hearing draft of Plan Morro Bay in October of 2020. As was mentioned, the Planning Commission has taken a look at that draft and had multiple meetings to receive input from them as well as the public. So that wrapped up in the last couple of months. And as I noted, you know, we've received input from the city staff and others at the city as well as the Coastal Commission staff throughout the process, but also Coastal Commission did take a look at that hearing draft and provided some input. And I'll get into a little more detail on that. So just to lay out the organization of the document before we get into some of the information about the review of the hearing draft, we have the introduction to start and then the vision section. And then section three, as I mentioned, is what we call the blueprint. And we have an introduction there and then we have the land use element, community design element, economic development element, circulation element, noise element. The housing element will be part of the blueprint and Plan Morro Bay. It is not part of what is in front of you tonight. It was updated separately and adopted in 2020. It's on a different cycle. But once you complete your, your plan, then it will be rolled into Plan Morro Bay. And then section four is the green print introduction. And then following that, the conservation element, open space element, public safety element, and environmental justice element. You'll note that there's a name change there. The environmental justice element was called the community well-being element in earlier drafts, and so that's something to note for those that haven't participated in the entire process. Following the green print and blueprint sections, we have the implementation section. And this has a short introduction and mostly is made up of a large table that reiterates the implementation actions that can also be found throughout the elements. But they are laid out in this table with additional information about prioritizing the actions over time as well as responsibility for those actions at the city and in the community and where funding may come from for those actions. So it's really a tool for the city to use moving forward. And then finally, we have the glossary and acronyms in section six and the appendices, which I noted earlier. Those have not changed in this draft. So I think some of this I already mentioned, so just to give you the history of what happened along the way, some of the comments and commenters. Okay, and then here's a summary of the comments that we received on this, on the hearing draft. Actually, this is not, sorry, I apologize. This is not the... Some of these slides are extra, so let me jump into here. So the changes from the hearing draft to the final draft. So the hearing draft was released last October, as I mentioned, and the comments were received from city staff, members of the public, Planning Commission, and Coastal Commission staff. And we didn't receive, you know, the level of comments that we did on the public draft, but there were quite a few. Some of the key comments from the public, the issue areas that they commented on included the lateral access policies in the land use element, sea level rise in the public safety element, and various comments on the environmental justice element. The Planning Commission had comments on almost all of the sections and elements. They did have a little greater amount of comments on the land use element, conservation element, and public safety element. In terms of the Coastal Commission staff comments, they had a relatively small set of comments on the hearing draft. And so the key edits that were made in response to those comments, we did have some conversations and back and forth with them about their comments. So the things that were done in response to their comments included some further reorganization to clarify what portions of Plan Morro Bay are part of the local coastal program and what portions are not. We also did a little more reorganizations to clarify, you know, what applies to the Embarcadero in terms of the public safety element policies and what doesn't. And one change that happened between the public draft and the hearing, public hearing draft was that policies that only apply in the Embarcadero area were all moved into the land use element in a special section. So some more policies were moved into that section in response to the comments on the public hearing draft. And then there were some additional edits made to the information about sea level rise in the public safety element. And some of these came from comments we got from the Planning Commission as well to clarify what amount of sea level rise we're talking about in that element, in particular to say, you know, what change would be needed to trigger certain requirements. And instead of just saying what year that is expected to happen so that over time, you know, we can look back at this and say, well, it was this many feet that was, you know, going to trigger this kind of action by the city rather than it was going to happen in a certain year that may not actually be when that impact happens. So that was added for clarification. And then they, the Coastal Commission staff also wanted to make sure it's clear that, you know, the science is changing all the time in terms of sea level rise. And so the baseline information for this document is already a little bit different than the current science that's available so that someone reading this would understand that and know that the city is going to continue to look at the new, best available science as we move forward. And I think the mayor covered the next steps very well, but, you know, the Planning Commission will be taking a look at the final EIR and then a recommendation will be made, we assume, next week at their meeting. And then the council will start their official review in April. And then following adoption of the EIR and Plan Morro Bay, then it will be submitted to the Coastal Commission for certification. And I'm happy to take any questions on the overview. I know that it's a lot in a short amount of slides, but wanted to take a look back before we jump into the discussion.
So Amy, do you have further presentation or basically are you ready for council questions?
That is my presentation.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure we were there. I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment first and then I'll go to any council questions or comments. So with that, if we could, I will go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for the item on this agenda only. The format for giving public comment is now on the screen. You can either call in and use a specific number to make that happen, which is on the screen, and/or you can join in on the Zoom link. Be sure you use the raised hand or press nine if you're calling in by phone to give your public comments. So with that, Anthony, do we have any public comments, sir?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I see Sean Green with his hand up. I'm going to go ahead and unmute him. Okay, Sean, you are unmuted.
Welcome, Sean. Thanks. I want to start by saying to council that, you know, every closed-door meeting or unscheduled special meeting you hold, you know, according to many of your residents, is really more evidence that transparency and community engagement aren't quite the top priorities that we claim that they are. So that, I think that's just food for thought and I think some people have good, reasonable opinions about that. That said, I want to speak to two minor, pretty minor points regarding the general plan draft, but they're minor details that I think need to be addressed and explicitly added. The first does deal with lateral access. In section 3-43, lateral access describes the ability to move parallel to the coastline along the shore. And we're all reasonable people. We know that the shoreline varies, okay? You have to move in and out. So if there's a pathway along a lakeshore or the ocean shore, it's going to meander a little bit. It's not always perfectly parallel. And so keeping that in mind, the latest draft of the general plan does successfully stipulate a 10-foot minimum lateral access pathway on the bayside of all Embarcadero leaseholder parcels, which I think is great. What the draft plan does not currently stipulate and should is that 10 feet minimum must be maintained from parcel to parcel or from parcel to city right-of-way. You'll find in your email some images of what I mean. I've drawn some things. I've taken some images. You've probably seen the recent improvements to House of Juju's waterfront connection, which I think does it great compared to many of, many of the others along the waterfront. But essentially, council, for the sake of the city's pedestrian-friendly future, must dictate not only a 10-foot minimum lateral access, but also a maximum angle of 45 degrees for each parcel-to-parcel connection or parcel-to-city dead-end street right-of-way. If in the case that 45 degrees is not feasible, the general plan should dictate a continuation of 10 feet lateral access to the property line and explicitly disallow the five-foot vertical pinch points that eliminate any meaningful waterfront pathway, which arguably violates the California Coastal Act regardless of how we're currently interpreting lateral and vertical access. An alternative to adding those stipulations that I just mentioned would be to simply eliminate the misclassification of lateral access as vertical access as it's currently and wrongly being applied to these disruptive pinch points at, for example, Hofbra and the Galley. Again, lateral access describes the ability to move parallel to the coastline along the shore. Every step a pedestrian takes along the bayside of Embarcadero is movement parallel to the coastline along the shore. The second detail, again, minor, but I think it makes a huge difference, privacy screening. As we see all around the town in the residential areas, it's allowed up to six feet on the side and rear of properties and three feet, sometimes four feet, in the front yards of residential areas. Along the Embarcadero between Tidlins Park and Morro Rock, privacy screening has no place whatsoever, and we see it on significant stretches of Embarcadero, including Morro Bay Yacht Club and Stacks that come to mind. Privacy screening should only be explicitly allowed for trash enclosures and should be explicitly forbidden in all other areas of commercial districts, especially the Embarcadero. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sean. I appreciate that. And thanks for the email memorializing your statements. I appreciate it. Anthony, next public comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see Kristen Hedlund with her hand up.
Welcome, Kristen.
Okay, Kristen, I have unmuted you.
Welcome, Kristen.
Hello, my name's Kristen Hedlund. Can you hear me?
Yes, Kristen, welcome.
Okay. So, good afternoon, city council members and staff. I submitted a correspondence regarding 33 Panorama Drive, the Tennequre Parcel in North Morro Bay. I've been active regarding this piece of property in North Morro Bay because I live in that area. There is some concern about the density of this property. I have approached the Planning Commission and spoke at the GPAC when the GPAC was occurring. So I'm very familiar with this piece of property. I'm hoping that when the EIR comes back, that there may be an open discussion about land use here in North Morro Bay. My concerns are that the density of this piece of property could make a big impact for the residents that live up here. We have a big traffic concern. Our streets are narrow, our lots are small. And so I'm hoping that we'll be able to have a discussion about the traffic impacts to North Morro Bay in relationship to this piece of property. That's all I have for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kristen. And we did receive your email. Thank you for memorializing that as well. We appreciate that. Next public comment, Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay. Thank you so much. With that, we will close public comment and bring it back to the council. Council will go ahead and open it up for any comments or questions of Amy and or Scott that you may have. And let's go ahead, if we could, begin with Councilmember Heller, sir.
All righty. Let me see here. Well, I'm just going to let you look at my picture here for a minute. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scott Graham and Amy Sinsheimer, thank you so much for your years of work on this important, important piece. And I'm sure we're all glad that we only have to do this every 20 years. It's an enormous undertaking and it's a remarkable work product that has come out and has been reviewed by so many for such a long time. As a former member of GPAC, frankly, I joined in 2016 and not knowing much about planning, I was quickly overwhelmed with the terminology and trying to figure out what things meant. And I can't say that I've progressed much in that direction, so I have a few kind of simple questions I wanted to ask here without taking too much time. So a land use map versus a zoning map. Can you explain to me what the difference is between those two, either one of you?
So the land use map is what goes along with the city's general plan and local coastal plan in this instance. The general plan is our, is the city's top-tier land use document, so that map takes priority over, say, a zoning map. Zoning map is implemented, is what implements the land use map from the general plan. So you have one, one map that's associated with the general plan and another map that's associated with the zoning code. And so the, I would say that the land use map associated with the general plan is a little more broad spectrum and the zoning map tends to be a little more fine-tuned, although ours sort of mirror one another now because we're a small city, but at least in the drafts that we have so far. Does that help?
It helps a lot. Thank you very much. I was never quite sure what prevails over what, but so the land use map prevails over the zoning, the zoning map, right? Okay. Now, as I understand it, this Plan Morro Bay, the document we're looking at reviewing, has a new updated land use map. And if this general plan is adopted, then that land use map becomes the new land use map for the city. Is that right?
You are correct.
Okay. Hey, how about that? Now, the zoning, it does not, this plan does not include a new zoning map. Am I correct about that?
So it's, we have this broken into two sort of efforts, okay? We're doing the combination of the general plan with coastal program into one document. Currently, it's two. And then there's a, the other piece, the Plan Morro Bay, is the zoning code piece. And that is moving through the process right now. We're just having it staggered so this doesn't hit the Planning Commission and City Council all at the same time. That's a lot. You have other things you need to do other than just the general plan and zoning code. So we're trying to be, you know, respective of, respectful of the other items that you need to review. So it is trailing behind and you should be hitting the Planning Commission with the zoning code probably in the, in April. We'll probably be coming forward with the draft of that document.
Okay, so the zoning code process is underway and that will generate a new Okay, so the zoning code process is underway, and that will generate a new zoning map as well as new language for the municipal code, or?
All of those, yeah, yes, the zoning code is in chapters, chapter 17 of your municipal code. We have the drafts of the zoning code online right now, and we have the draft zoning map online right now as well, under the Plan Moro Bay portion of our website.
Okay. So until all of those get approved, my understanding is what we have on the website right now in terms of land use is an old map with a lot of dots on it, it's kind of funny, but it's 1997 is the most current land use map, and the most current zoning map is also from 1997. Am I correct in understanding that those are the two prevailing documents right now?
Cindy, what's the year on the zoning map?
It is 1997.
Okay, it is, I thought it was the same, but I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Okay, so they're both dated February 1997, I believe, in terms of when they were certified, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's good we're doing a new general plan, I think we kind of need some new maps. The, kind of the, the other question I wanted to add, well, let me just, let's get right to it, I think kind of one of the big issues that's a concern for a lot of people, you know, there are four developable, or redevelopable parcels identified in Plan Moro Bay, one of which is 3300 Panorama Drive. And looking at the current zoning map on their website, it shows that site clearly zoned as R1 slash PD, staying for Plan Development. Is that your understanding of what the zoning of that parcel is right now?
Yes.
Okay. And then looking, the other part of the land use element that I wanted to talk about is your new, maybe it's not new, but it's the land use designation, which is table LU dash one, page 47, I think it is, and the residential densities listed there. You probably have this memorized, are you familiar with that table, Scott, in the meeting?
Are you talking, I, yeah, I'm really with the land use for the property.
I'm talking about the table in the Plan Moro Bay.
Yes.
So you've got low-density resi, so these are the four residential designations that you have, one is low-density, next one's moderate density, third one's medium density, and the fourth one is high density. And, you know, I'm used to, rather than five, four residential density designations, I'm used to seeing five with the lowest density, one being RA, and then the next one's R1, et cetera, through R4. Do these four here correspond to those numbers in some way?
Do they correspond to, so the densities are, yes, they're similar, I guess I'm not exactly sure what you're asking. The density for moderate underneath the current land use map is four to seven, medium is seven to 15.
Right.
And we have those similar classifications in the new, in the new maps, although, yeah, so those, they are similar, yes.
Yeah, okay, so, I mean, most cities that I've worked with use these four, but they also have a RA designation that's actually lower density. And if you were to use the old numbers, the R1, old terminology, R1 would be equivalent to the low-density residential, R2 would be equivalent to the moderate density, R3 medium, and R4 would be high. Is that, is that why you're looking at these designations, you're calling them something different now, which is fine, but, but most cities, low-density is equal to R1, which is equal to zero to four units per acre? Is that your understanding of what these, how these correlate?
They're different for different cities, but typically, an R1 designation will be that, that kind of four to seven range is in there. It's not, that's pretty common, and then they might have something else that's very low density or something like that, that's the, the zero to four that you referenced, Councilmember Heller.
Okay.
Or in our instance, we have an RA designation in the current one that's like that, so.
Okay, so, so basically, you're saying then the moderate density is corresponds to what the city's R1 is or used to be, and that's 4.1 to 7 units per acre?
Yes.
Okay. So this is a big deal, obviously, specifically with respect to the Panorama project, you know, I appreciate your understanding of your explanation, but I haven't taken issue with that, but maybe you can look at that a little more closely. The cities that I checked today, the vast majority, low-density residential is their R1 and zero to four units per acre. So, you know, of the whole general plan, to me, this is the only thing that would make me oppose approving it. It's a huge deal for our community, and it's been discussed for a really long time, so if you could, please take a close look at that and see where you think you stand, if you wouldn't mind. So that's, that's what I have, I have a little comments on all the other elements, but really the most important one is what I just discussed, and I know we're short on time today, so that's, that's all I wanted to ask and talk about. Thank you both very much for all your work, and the Planning Commission, and the GPAC, and heaven knows how many other people have looked at this and commented, Commerce, Shaun Bree, residents, just a great community effort by everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller, appreciate your detailed questions about the density issue, and of course, we will have further public hearings at the city council level and a greater opportunity to dig deep into those issues as we move forward with our review, so thanks for that. Let's go to Councilmember Davis, sir, questions or comments at this point?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your presentation today. I spoke with Erica Crawford this morning, and I know that the chamber is going to give us some more detailed input, but I wanted to ask a couple of specific questions today about new residential areas in the city. And one of those that is mentioned is the possibility of development in the Vistra Power Plant as well as north along Atascadero Road, which I take to be the existing wastewater treatment plant area. But the latest information I've seen about Vistra is that the land use covenants that PG&E left make that unsuitable for residential development. Is that going to require a change in our general plan?
I don't believe so, I mean, we were aware of the covenants previously, when we went through the process. They were placed on there by PG&E when they sold the property, and they can be removed. You know, they just reflect the onsite scenario as it relates to potential issues with contamination of the soil onsite. You know, it's also part of the, you know, process that Vistra is dealing with currently with the Department of Toxic Substances Control, DTSC, also places limitations on what you can do out there until you clean it, like you could start with the kind of lower level, which is industrial, and you have to clean it up a little bit more to get commercial, and a little bit more to get residential, that type of thing. Those same types of things can work in, you know, in relationship to removing the restriction of use on the site that was placed there by PG&E when the property was previously sold. So, and my understanding in talking with folks at Vistra is they've had conversations about what that might look like as well, so they've been looking at this for a while.
Okay, and then how about the circulation in that area? Are we anticipating that we're going to develop the unpaved section of Embarcadero Road and put a more robust bridge over the creek to connect around the corner to Highway 41 and one?
Well, the, I mean, if we developed as is indicated in the draft land use plan, then as the property developed, we would do a master plan for some of those things, and it would tell us the infrastructure needs that we would have, and then address how you would gain access, whether it's through the site out the back over to, you know, where Main Street is in that area, or whether it's where you talked about going in a bridge that's somewhere parallel to the pedestrian bicycle bridge that's there now and goes over to Atascadero Road, it could do something along those lines. It could, you know, get over to that area where the bridge is and maybe, you know, turn east and cross a little bit further up, kind of between there and sort of the Main Street area, there's other options, but it would be predicated on how the site develops out. I mean, I know you're aware, everybody's aware, that we have the battery project that they've submitted to us that takes about 20-plus acres of the site into consideration for development for the battery storage project, but, but, you know, development, you know, with the visitor mixed-use sort of component to it that's envisioned in the draft document would require some additional planning efforts on their part, a master plan to discuss infrastructure needs, including circulation.
Okay, so what you're saying is that our general plan is a 30,000-foot look at what we want to end up with, but specific, specific development plans would come more from a developer who goes in and purchases the property and brings a specific vision to the city that fits within our general plan parameters, is that accurate?
Yeah, that's perfect, that's exactly what we're talking about. There's a, there's requirements in the draft document that require a master plan be developed. Once that, once the GPLCP is adopted and put in place and certified, then any development that would come onto the property after that point would be required to do that, you know, go through that process. Short of that, if, say the document wasn't immediately adopted and Vistra sold the property to somebody else, or they came through and demoed the stacks in the building and had a lot of vacant area there to develop, the other way that would happen is they were trying to do that through our current zoning, they would have to do a zoning amendment if they wanted to do visitor survey commercial now and a land use amendment, and they would have to address those concerns through the environmental document that would be created in association with that project. So that's how it would work under a current land use and zoning, the master plan would be how it works, moving forward, once the general plan is adopted and certified by the Coastal Commission.
Please, thank you for all my questions, and I really appreciate your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis, very much appreciated. Councilmember Ellis, questions or comments?
Yes, well, thank you to staff and to the committee that reviewed this. I know you had over 30 meetings, and all of the public, and I think tremendous amount of work has gone into getting this as far as it has, and I really appreciate it. I sent my comments already to staff and/or my questions, as it were, and most of them surrounded sea level rise and resiliency connected to climate change, and how we would connect planning for that with our major budgeting forecast. And the response I got was basically that this is all a work in progress, and so I don't really have many questions, so much as that I hope as council, we can keep our eye on, on the planning for sea level rise and for climate resiliency, and I'm glad that it's, that it's part of our general plan and that we, you know, staff has our eyes on that, but I hope we can start thinking about the finances of that. That's it really for me.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Ellis, appreciate that. Councilmember Barton, questions or comments, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Loud and clear.
Oh, great, I'm delighted, I'm so sorry. My computer froze up, so I'm on my phone, but it has the wrong screen up, so I wasn't sure if I, if you could hear me. I, a lot of, part of, you know, a whole bunch of this is fairly new to me, but some of the questions that have been asked are ones that I had as well. I enjoyed reading Erica's memo today and the points that were being made and the additional time to want to process some of that, and the points that Red brought up and also that Don brought up are all things that are on my mind as well, so I'm looking forward to this coming back one more time and being able to, you know, see some of the additions or changes or more explanation, so that's it.
Great, thank you. Zoom presents all kinds of new opportunities for us to...
Honestly, this happened last meeting, too, it hadn't happened before, and now it's happened twice, so.
Well, thank you, staff, also, as everybody has mentioned on council, thank you for, man, a tremendous amount of work since 2015, a plan that is absolutely dated, not the existing, but I mean the former, general plan, local coastal plan, and I don't, I don't know that the public perhaps understands the amount of effort and time, not only on the part of staff, but on the part of the community that has gone into this document that will soon come to the city council. For me, it is so important to get robust community input, because this is the guiding map for the next 20-plus years for the community. And so I'm particularly appreciative of what staff has done in terms of forming the GPAC or council formed the GPAC, staff ran it, and thank you, Councilmember Heller, for your former service on that committee. I want to thank everybody that was involved in that for a number of years and making recommendations on the plan. I know we've had changes in our consultant staff, and Amy, thank you for your guidance and your work, and Scott, Scott Graham, your leadership, I appreciate so much in moving this forward with a tremendous amount of other things on your plate that you're working through, and so I know that this is a monumental undertaking. And so I want to really comment more on process going forward so that I can ensure in my mind that we're going to be able to maximize our community input. So a couple of questions. First of all, as I recall, the Planning Commission has completed their review, however, it will be going to their March 16 meeting, and I believe that will be a public hearing for further comment on the EIR, is that correct?
That's true, you know, the focus will be the EIR, we'll probably spend about 30 minutes kind of going over the last round of review the Planning Commission gave us, I think we had four or five meetings with them, so we'll touch base on those. I would also take an opportunity to point out that on the city's Plan Moro Bay website, we have all the comment sheets that go from the public, from the Planning Commission, from the Coastal Commission, it says what the comments were, what we've done, how we've incorporated those or not incorporated them into the document, so that's always an interesting thing to look at, to see what the concerns were, you know, where we've gone with that, that type of thing, always a, you know, a good, you know, good way to touch base and kind of see, you know, the progress of the document over time.
And then, Scott, after that, the recommendations from Planning Commission will then come to city council, and we will have a couple of public hearings, during which time the public can engage, and we'll delve into the details of this, so further opportunity for community input significantly at that level, correct?
Yeah, that's true, I mean, to this point, we've probably had 50-plus public meetings, maybe closing in on 60, certainly we'll probably be over that 60 mark by the time we complete the review through Planning Commission recommendation and city council review and adoption.
And so I wanted to explore the next step, after it gets through city council and we give our comments and get through a final approval, what's the process, and I know you've involved all along the Coastal Commission, and I appreciate that, getting their input, involving their staff, so that they're not all of a sudden surprised with a major plan that could take forever for them to review, but what is the go-forward process and what's the timing in your estimate for Coastal Commission review and approval?
So we, yeah, we will, you know, part of the city council's approval process will include authorization to submit the... include authorization to submit the plan to the Coastal Commission for certification. We've had many, many, many interactions with Coastal Commission on this to get it to a point where they're comfortable with where it's at right now. I, now, that's not to say that they won't, you know, take it through a process and request changes and/or approve it with changes. They, they probably will have some edits. I would be surprised if they didn't. So that's, I foresee that coming forward to, you know, coming back to us with some changes that'll have to go back to Planning Commission and city council. Hopefully, they're relatively minor and, just to provide clarification, because I think we have incorporated all the major topic items from them into the document. So much so that they were, they were very happy with where we were at on the last round, and so that should go smoothly. My guess is, once we submit it to them, we're four to six months out from their, you know, sending it back to us, either certified or, you know, requesting, you know, major edits. Hopefully, it's not major edits because they've had a lot of opportunity to weigh in.
And it seems like on every one of their agendas, they've got a number of these that are being submitted by, by communities across the state for approval and review. So, so we could expect turnaround maybe in the area of four to six months with regard to their approval process.
And that's what they've indicated to us in the past.
Okay. Good. And as Councilmember Davis and maybe others have mentioned, I have received input from groups, from the community, not only the working groups that I mentioned, but also other groups like a working group on the Barcadero with regard to sea level rise issues, concerns about economics associated with that, a number of comments, obviously, from the chamber, comprehensive review on the part of the chamber. And then I've received a number of individual comments from folks in the community. My question is, what's the best way now for the ongoing public to engage outside of the process of the formal council meetings? Of course, everyone's welcome to do it at council meetings, but since there are no more review bodies like the GPAC or any community advisory groups, how would individuals have their questions entertained and get answered with regard to staff? Directly through email? What's the best way to do that?
That is the best way. You know, our email addresses are on the website, mine, but mine and Cindy's are on the, on the website. It's also great, you know, if you really want, because we're kind of, you know, at the end line now, right? We're getting ready to cross the finish line. And so I think as we get closer to these, these key meetings, it's good to send your comments also, you know, to those bodies, the Planning Commission. Because if there are things that the Planning Commission is really interested in, and one of those things is on your list, then they can bring it forward and say, yes, please go make this change. Because they're the, they're giving, they're the advisory body for the, for the city council in this adoption process, and so that would be the most helpful. And then if they're not able to get those comments into us before, say, that meeting on the 16th, then we're going to have meetings moving forward into April or May with the city council. And so sending them to the council would be a good way to do that in case the council thinks those are really interesting ideas. And that would be after, you know, the Planning Commission's made their recommendations. So those would be the ways that I would suggest the public engage. Because it's always good if you have a good idea, that it's, you have an advocate, you know, that's on the Planning Commission or city council to, you know, to bring it forward.
Right. Good. Well, I appreciate that. I'm really, I think, obviously, community engagement remains an extremely important part of this. And often, basically, before you get ready to cross the goal line, new questions arise and maybe individuals see it for the first time, although it's been around for now almost six years with regard to review and finally coming to culmination. But I wanted to make sure that the community knew there'll be ample opportunity, either individually with your staff and/or of course at the Planning Commission level or city council level, to give significant further input. And then perhaps my last question is, once the document is approved by Coastal and then becomes memorialized with regard to the city, what's the process in the future for review, updating, et cetera? Maybe you could just elaborate on that for, for the community and us as well?
Yeah, we will, we will invariably be updating it along the way. You know, it's a 20-year, you know, it's got a 20-year planning horizon on it. And as we start using it, you know, we'll find things that we don't like about it, or laws will change, or things like that, and we'll go through update processes periodically. We can process on the general plan side up to four year, four per year amendments. And for the local coastal program, we can process up to three amendments a year. I would envision us having a few of those in the early days after adoption as we find things that maybe don't work like we thought they would, or something along those lines. That's fairly typical, you know, for these types of documents. You had more so for zoning codes. You adopt a new zoning code and think everything is good, you go out there and use it, and you've got little, you've got parts of it that are kind of clunky and you need to fix them. So I kind of see that, you know, that's how it typically works for most cities, you know, you know, that I've been aware of, and especially ones that have done comprehensive updates like the city's done. We've, we didn't, it's not, it's not a small update to either one of those documents. It's a, it's a, it's a full overhaul, really, so.
Well, again, thanks, Scott, to you, and thanks to your team. Amy, thank you so much. Again, planning commissioners, thank you for your work over the years on this document and more recently with your review of it comprehensively. We look forward to it coming to us after it goes through the Planning Commission. And unless there are other questions or comments, I think we're, we're done. Any other comments, folks? Seeing no heads move? Okay. Well, with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. The next meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be, look at my clock, in one hour and four minutes, 5:30 this evening. Thank you again for everybody being here, and have a great evening. See you shortly.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.